To just go ahead and just talk about the hiring process and then the expectations of the two board members as we move forward.
Yeah, the process for the full-time application ends tomorrow, February 7th. So, starting next week, February 10th through February 13th, we'll have two Board of Safety members and two Fire Department members conduct interviews that were done on our hiring site. There's five or six interview questions and they do the video interview. So, the two, all four of us will go through each member, kind of grade them, write miscellaneous notes down. And along with that, that'll give us the kind of a ranking, a rough ranking. And then probably maybe the top 10 will get pulled in for the second round of in-person interviews. Probably looking maybe at the week of, maybe the 17th or the first week in March. Because Chief Patterson is gone the last week of February, so either before or after, we're going to try to get those second round of interviews completed.
Okay, I got confused for a minute. So, what's the two-week period where you think the second round might occur?
We're going to try for the week of this February 17th, somewhere in there.
Okay.
But if we can't get them all done, it will be probably the first week of March, week of March 3rd.
Okay, and as we discussed, the two board members, we're going to want them to stay consistent throughout the whole process.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so we know that Spike's agreed to do it and Mr. Volkman's unavailable. So, we'll wait till, we'll wait till Dave gets here and then if Dave's unavailable, then I'll take, I'll step in and do the second spot.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
That's it for fire.
Okay.
Also, Eric, I was just going to also remind everyone on the board that February 27th, we had that Animal Control Commission proceeding. So, we sent the notices out today and I delivered the letter to the individual that's involved.
Okay.
About to happen February 27th at 5:00 p.m. right here.
Yeah, and we do have commitment from at least three board members, so we'll definitely be here.
Thank you. And Austin's office, Dave Austin's office also committed today. And then Christian will be sitting in for the proceeding.
Okay, very good. And Dave, I'm glad you're here because we were just talking about you. So, and I might have him redo it if, or if I misspeak, if you'll let me know, since Chief Myers. So, for the Fire Department process, they've done like online, go ahead Dave, you explain it. And then we need one board member, Spike's going to be one. It just requires that this be done at least for the first round on the computer.
Yeah.
So, go ahead Dave, one more time.
Yeah, the process ends tomorrow, February 7th. So, next week, the February 10th through February 13th, we're going to need two Board of Safety members to conduct the first round of video interviews. The applicants had like five questions to add on the website, they had five questions to answer and they did it through like a video interview. So, we'll need two Board of Safety members to sit there and go through the grading and rank the members, kind of score them. There's a spot for there if they want to write any special notes down.
And Dave, that's at your leisure time.
Yes.
They'll send you a link.
You'll be able to do it from your home.
Got it.
Because once we get the two members who's going to be involved, I can enter them into the program. And you will get email invites to log in, create your account, and then you'll be, have access to the applicants to do the ratings.
Yeah, I'm good. And you're saying that's 10th, 11th, and 12th?
We will, we will open it up Monday, February 10th, and we're going to hope, we want everybody done by the 13th. So, it gives you four, four full days to get done with, get done with the ratings.
Okay, so it's not every day?
No, if you want to knock them out in one day, by all means. But since there's like possibly right now, there's 16 of them, we kind of just, you got four days, break them up because we know everybody's busy up there. So, couple, a couple of days, a couple this day, just as long as everything's done by Thursday.
Yep, I got you.
Okay, and he showed us the link and it looked really, really friendly to use. But the other aspect of that is, the two-part commitment is, the same two board members have to show up for round two. And he's anticipating that there may be as many as 10 candidates that should be interviewed in person like we've done in the past, Dave. And you're going to have to coordinate something either the week of the 17th or the week of March 3rd. So, are you in town for those days or, or a span where they can find a common ground?
Mr. Chairman, are you talking March 17th or March 3rd?
February 17th.
The week of February 17th, or if that doesn't work, the week of March 3rd. And then they'll set up, they'll coordinate a time where, where we'll sit down like we always do and do candidate after candidate.
February I'm good for and...
First week.
You said it was the 17th, right?
March, the week of March 3rd.
March, oh, week of March 3rd.
And we're not setting that exact date, Dave, we're just making sure you're available in that, in that area.
Yeah, I'll work with you.
Yep.
We'll figure it out.
Okay, so...
Thank you.
So, the final answer will be Dave Eisenberg would be one.
Dave one and Dave two, got it.
Got it. Perfect.
Okay, thanks for doing that, guys. And I, before you got here, I did explain to them that we had met with Chief Sormas and his command staff and did pick out the Officer of the Year, Civilian of the Year, and Detective of where. And the winners will be announced soon and we'll be doing that award presentation at the March meeting, correct?
The March meeting, that's correct.
Okay.
Got it, great. And I apologize for my tardiness.
You're all good, Dave. Was there anything else, Chief Sormas?
Nothing at this time.
Chief Patterson?
Nothing else.
Okay, so we have about 15 minutes then, unless anybody else has anything? Well, the only thing discussed was that, that dog, that dog hearing on the 27th, and we'll get more information as that gets a little closer.
Don't set me.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any details about what is it going to be contested on the 27th? Is it going to be?
You know, I think they, so they sent out the initial.
Are we? Some kind of feedback?
Yes, until the, until the 5:30 meeting.
Yes, until the, until the 5:30 meeting.
The Town of Sheroville Board of Safety meeting, February 6th, 2025, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Move on to the roll call.
Eric Graff.
Here.
George Chorus.
Here.
David Enniganberg.
Here.
David Jarazuski.
Present.
Robert Volkman.
Here.
Attorney Christian Bartholomew.
Here.
Police Chief Peter Sormas.
Here.
Deputy Chief of Police, Steven McNamara.
Here.
Fire Chief Robert Patterson.
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief David Meyer.
Here.
Recording Secretary Stephanie Bodiger here.
Thank you, move on to the approval of the minutes, we'll start with the Board of Safety approval of minutes for January 9th, 2025, I'll need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
I have a motion, I'll need a second. Motion is a second, any conversations, gentlemen? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Passed unanimously. Go on to approval of minutes for the special meeting for the Fire Department Mayor Board, which took place January 30th, 2025, I'll need a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, I'll need a second. I have motion and a second, any conversations, gentlemen? Hearing none, will all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, it passes unanimously. Move on to correspondence, starting with Fire Chief Patterson, a thank you letter.
Yes, we received a thank you letter from a family of a mother that we took care of, and they just wanted to thank us for the services that we provided to them, so that was it.
Thank you, Chief, move on to Chief Sormas, correspondence.
No correspondence tonight.
Okay, go on to old business, we'll start, Chief Sormas, we'll leave it with you, go ahead, any old business?
No old business tonight.
Chief Patterson?
No old business.
Go on to new business, start with the Fire Department, the time promotion, Chief Patterson.
Yes, I'm looking for approval to accept time promotion for Jason Noto from third class to second class firefighter EMT. He's been doing an outstanding job, he's just finished his paramedic program and waiting to take his national registry, so I'm looking for approval to move forward with his time promotion.
Okay, so I'll need a motion for the time promotion, promotion.
So moved.
Jeez, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is a second, any conversations, gentlemen? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
New business, Chief Sormas.
No new business.
Okay, we'll move on to reports, Chief Sormas.
Yeah, we just have one item to report, other than what's in your packet, we have our Coffee with the Cop that's being hosted by McDonald's here in Shererville, and it's going to be Thursday, March 13th, 2025, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and it's just a good opportunity for, that brings the men and women in their uniform together with their communities to connect over a cup of coffee, so it'll be a free small cup of coffee, or McCafé, iced or hot coffee, that McDonald's will be hosting.
Very good, and we've attended those before, and it's a nice event, so I'm trying to get all these guys who's ever available to, to go out there at 9:00.
Everyone's welcome.
Okay, very good. Reports, Fire Chief Patterson.
No additional reports.
Okay, attorney?
No reports.
Thank you. Any business from the board members?
Good.
Okay, we'll move on to business from the floor. Okay, hearing done, I'll make a, I'll need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is a second, any conversations, gentlemen? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is over, thank you.